Okay, 12 seconds. All right. Five, four, three, two, one. Punctuality. Uh, this is Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for two hearings today. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my far right, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. To my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Member of the Committee. And to my far left, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. To my immediate right, Nia Garrett, Staff to the Committee. We have, uh, two bills today. Uh, we're also joined by Representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. So we have two bills today. Um, one is a zoning bill. Uh, we will, uh, hear this bill in its entirety. We do not have a quorum of the committee, so we are not able to take a vote, uh, today. We do have hearings scheduled for next Tuesday. October 8th. Um, at the worst-case scenario, I anticipate, I want to be clear that I am not making a commitment, but I anticipate at the worst-case scenario, we will be able to take a vote on this matter next Tuesday, uh, in the 10:00 AM hearing slot time range. Uh, we could reschedule a hearing earlier than that. Either way, whatever we do on that matter will be posted on the Baltimore City Council website under the Legislative Calendar. Reconvening that hearing after we go into recess without a vote does not require, uh, reposting of the property. Uh, Department of Law, if you could please verbally confirm that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll get started. Council Bill 24-0552, zoning, commercial one, Village Center District, conditional use, retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales, variances 6242 Balona Avenue. Uh, let's start with, uh, Department of Planning favorable?
Yes.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department not opposed? Thank you. Uh, Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority Baltimore City favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation favorable?
Favorable, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, so we did Planning, BDC, DHCD, Fire, Transportation, Parking. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals defers to Planning?
I assume so.
On behalf of Department of Planning?
Yeah.
Um, we'll move forward without a representative from BMCA here, but their letter does indicate that they defer to the Plan, Department of Planning. And, uh, notwithstanding any communication that, that has not come in, uh, restating their opinion, we will safely assume that that is their opinion. And finally, the Law Department favorable with finding of facts? So let's start with, is the bill as currently drafted approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and, um, noting with finding of facts, we usually move finding of facts on second reader. So there's, just to verbally confirm what I believe is the answer, there is no need to entertain the finding of facts today during this, uh, proceeding, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Colleagues, are there any questions for our city agencies? Are there any members of the public here today who wish to testify on this matter? Gentlemen, um... Are you that, are you the applicant or are you just a, a neighbor? Neighbor, all right, you come on up, the, the one that spoke up first? So we'll start, you, you had the courage to speak up first, so you're up first and then we'll go to him second. And sir, if you could please state your name and if you are here on behalf of any, uh, organization, whether it be a church, a community association, or anything of that matter that you're testifying on behalf of, I would appreciate after you state your, your full first and last name, if you'd name that organization prior to testifying. Uh, normally, uh, we limit, uh, testimony for these types of matters in this committee, uh, to two minutes, so I'll, I'll give you reminders when we get to the two-minute mark. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Wilson. I'm just here representing myself. I'm here to express my support for the zoning variance and Pinehurst's efforts to expand their footprint and their offerings. I live three houses away from the wine shop, having moved there about 18 years ago. The current management team headed by Gordon McNamara has made a number of significant improvements in the property since taking over a few years ago. And when my wife and I first moved here, the back parking lot was hard-packed clay with some gravel. Every time it rained, an orange river of muddy water would flow down the adjoining street from the parking lot. But Gordy got it paved with blacktop, eliminating this issue. Also, the exterior woodwork of the building used to be in poor condition with peeling lead paint, but that problem was also addressed by Gordon, and now the building is looking great. Gordy has worked with his immediate neighbors to provide fencing and shrubbery, to provide some buffer screening. Once when I asked Gordy to adjust his security lighting to keep them from shining in my bedroom, he responded immediately. In short, Gordy has bent over backwards to be a good neighbor. In conversations with my neighbors, I've tried to explain my view that life is a chess game. You have to think several moves ahead. What if the zoning variance is blocked and Gordy is forced to shutter or sell the business? Imagine the store being vacant for years. Is that what we want? Or imagine a less desirable enterprise taking over the store? Don't we want to support a known, responsible, small business rather than taking a chance on an unknown alternate future? I know I do. Finally, I want to thank you and especially Mark Conway, uh, for your efforts on behalf of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Don Struik. Uh, I'm here to express support for the 24-0552 zoning variance and Pinehurst Wine Shop's efforts to expand their footprint and offerings. My wife and I live two houses away from the wine shop, having moved there over 27 years ago, and we raised our family there. We appreciate the efforts that the current management team at Pinehurst has made to make improvements to the property and be supportive of neighbors. And as Dan mentioned, they've made some significant improvements. When some of my neighbors asked, uh, the wine shop management to address a variety of issues with the property, they did so. They also hosted the retirement for our longtime mail carrier, Renee Stokes, earlier this year. Of course, as someone who has spent most of his professional life in marketing and public relations, I appreciate the thoughtful marketing purpose of such an event. You want to get your wine shop recognized in the neighborhood. If we must have a small business in an established residential neighborhood, we want one that is responsible, does not impact our individual property values, and even enhances the value of our properties while supporting our neighbors and providing access to quality products, including from other local small businesses too. I also want to thank Mark Conway and his staff for supporting what has been a wonderful neighborhood to live in for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public present today who wish to testify? Mr. Barry? I see you brought an exhibit.
I'll try to re-brief, Mr. Chairman. Al Barry, the associates on behalf of the applicant, uh, two owners are here with me today if there are any other questions. Uh, this has been a, uh, long, uh, overdue but worthwhile discussion between the owners of Pinehurst Liquors, Councilman Conway, and the Balona Ginnings Association and the neighbors. We are here and thankful for the support that has been expressed. Uh, we've been working on this very actively for over a year with, uh, Councilman Conway's support and encouragement, and I want to have just a few things to be sure that it's in the record. Um, one, um, we have prepared findings of fact for the, uh, council's, uh, adoption, and we'll work with committee on having those, uh, before your voting session certainly. Um, and I wanted to put it for the...
Real quick, um, you have the finding of facts already completed?
Yeah, well, it was, it was submitted to the council committee, the, um, and I don't know what form you want to put these in when you vote on it, but we can work with the committee's staff.
If, if you've sent something over, that, that should be sufficient. Nia and I will review it and we'll let you know if we need any additional information. But that's...
Okay, I also, I also, just for the, have for your file, uh, a copy of my resume. I've been, uh, as many of you know, uh, um, working in planning and zoning for over 50 years and also been accepted as an expert witness in planning and zoning in various courts around the, and jurisdictions.
Excellent, I thought, I thought you were looking for a new job, Mr. Barry. Familiar with your resume and CV?
I won't because of your other hearing unless there are any questions. I, I won't go through them unless the council would, committee would like to hear the findings. But you're looking at a plan which is all, which basically shows the existing building along with two additions that are outlined in blue. And, um, this property, uh, summarized is, is rather unique. It's the only commercial property in the Balona Ginnings neighborhood. Uh, it also was rezoned, a portion of it was rezoned a few years ago at the, uh, with the support of the owners to take the commercial zoning away from the parking lot, and by doing that, it sort of limited the expansion it was even, uh, possible on this site. Uh, and that's detailed in my memo to you. The property was mentioned by one of the community members as, uh, being maintained and even rehabilitated, and the new plans show for an addition to, uh, match if not exceed that, uh, aesthetic value. Uh, we worked with the Department of Planning, um, to, uh, get the plans approved as part of their recommendation. It's in a, it's in a, a National Register Historic District, but does not fall within CHAP's approval. I have drawings which we've sent the committee, um, as well, but I can show you them if, if need be. Unless there are any other questions, I don't know if anybody else has signed up to testify. We can, we can, we could talk for an hour of all the reasons why this is good.
Not necessary, but thank you. Um, colleagues, any questions, uh, for Mr. Barry? Uh, Councilman Conway, I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue, and, uh, I will be sure to, um, share the, the favorable support, uh, that we've received from, um, verbally from these two gentlemen in the community, um, as well as the presentation with other committee members, as well as the, uh, uh, email transmitted finding of facts, so that committee members are prepared to take action on this as, as soon as humanly possible once we have a quorum. Thank you.
And there is, there is an MOU, uh, formal MOU that was signed between the Balona Ginnings Association and the owners. That should be part of your file as well. I think it's referenced in the bill. We may need to add a date to that as part of the second reader.
Outstanding. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are now in recess on that matter. Okay, we will now convene, uh, Resolution 24-0226R, informational hearing, East Baltimore Development Incorporated Audit. Uh, before we begin, I will turn to the lead sponsor of this resolution, Councilman Stokes, for brief introductory remarks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I'm just reading some of the history of EBDI, which, um, was established in 2001. Back then in 2001, there was former Councilman Carl Stokes who wanted to bring EBDI before the council. For some reason, the paperwork got stuck in somebody's desk who was chairing the committee. So now, 23 late, 23 years later, uh, EBDI, which controlled 88 acres of city-owned property, I literally had to drag them in here to tell them to come and let the community know exactly what they're doing. We shouldn't have to do that, it should have been more transparent. So, just reading off the, the history of EBDI, when you control that much land for the city, I should not have to ask them to come before the council. They should have been good neighbors or good business partners, because a lot of people in the community do not know what's going on. They don't know nothing about their finances. They don't know nothing about the development that's going on. So when you want to be transparent and control 88 acres of land in Baltimore City, again, I should not have to have this hearing. You should have been a good neighbor and come before this council, exactly know, let us know what you're doing, not particularly council, the community. They moved everybody out the neighborhood, everything wasn't transparent, everything wasn't honest. Now we back here again after 23 years to ask them to give us an update on exactly what they're doing in the community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, before we proceed, I'm going to do a quick run of show so everyone's aware of how we're going to handle today's hearing. Uh, so, we did introductions, we did brief remarks from the bill sponsor. Uh, next, we're going to go to our city agencies. We're going to ask our city agencies to comment on the resolution that has been introduced. After that, council members will ask questions of those city agencies. Then we will go to a presentation by EBDI. Then council members will ask questions of EBDI. Then we will take, uh, testimony from members of the public. Is everyone clear on what the agenda will be for today? Is there anyone who has any questions just about what the agenda or the flow is for today? So I will take everyone's silence to be confirmation that you understand and are in agreement with the rules that, and, and agenda that we have set forth today. Okay? Um, EBDI will be given, uh, 20 minutes for their presentation, uh, when we get to that. And then, hello, Ms. Edwards, how are you? Excellent, thank you. And we will go to, um, members of the public. By a quick show of hands, how many members of the public are here to testify who are not currently affiliated with EBDI? One, two, three, four? Uh, such as an, you are, all are not employed by EBDI, correct? Or contractually working with EB, okay. I just wanted to put everyone in a bucket. There's EBDI and then there's non-EBDI. You all are non-EBDI. Excellent. Okay, so, um, we've also been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, uh, 8th District Member of the Committee. Yes, sir. So, when we get to, uh, public testimony, um, we'll, we'll determine based on the length of the hearing at that point, how much time will be given for public testimony, but it will be no less than, than two minutes as is standard. Uh, so with that, uh, let's start with Baltimore Development Corporation, no objection?
No objection, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Department of Real Estate defers to Department of Audits?
That's correct.
Which is in the same agency?
Same agency.
Under the Office of Comptroller, so let's jump to Department of Audits comments.
Department of Audits does not have the authority to perform a forensic audit of, of, of an external nonprofit.
Understood. Quick question, does, um, uh, is, does audits have statutory authority to conduct an audit, uh, if that entity were to request it?
If what entity?
So if, if EBDI were to ask the Department of Audits to conduct an audit, do you have the statutory authority to conduct that?
I don't believe we do. I think we have the statutory authority only if the comptroller or the Board of Investments asks for that.
Yep, just, just wanted to understand that, perfect. Um, colleagues, any questions for our city agencies, specifically Baltimore Development Corporation or Department of Real Estate and/or Department of Audits within the Office of the Comptroller? Seeing as there are no questions, we will jump to EBDI. Um, we have a slide deck, or, uh, do you have the ability to get that up? Okay, we'll wait till we get that presentation up. Good enough for government, as they say. Okay, Ms. Washington?
Yes, the person, yeah.
Yep, and pull that up, yeah, you want to be about six inches away.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chair and Councilman Stokes and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Cheryl Washington. I'm the President and CEO of East Baltimore Development Incorporated.
One thing I forgot, Ms. Washington, if you could introduce any of your associates that are here with you, specifically first and last name, and, uh, job title and affiliation of whichever organization they're with, please and thank you.
Absolutely, and I'm joined today by Normita Goodrum, who works for the Nelson Ideation Group. She is our Economic Inclusion Monitor, so she'll be giving a part of our presentation. And I'm also joined by Graylin Smith, who's the Principal of SB and Company, which was the audit firm that was commissioned to do the investment audit on EBDI.
And one last question, do we have anyone here from the EBDI board?
Yes, sir. We have Johnny Coleman in the back, who's a legacy resident and our board member who's going to give testimony.
Okay, excellent, Mr. Coleman? That's you? Excellent, thank you so much for being here, sir. Ms. Washington, please take it away.
Thank you. And I'm trying to move the, the PowerPoint. Okay. Okay, no worries, no worries, thank you. So during our time today, I know our time is limited, um, I am going to provide an overview and some of the background of EBDI. Um, I'm going to go into our governance and operations. I'm going to speak to two specific, um, core values of EBDI, um, at the request of Councilman Stokes, related to our economic inclusion efforts and our community reinvestment fund. And then I'm going to give an update on our real estate development projects. I will share that due to time constraints, I submitted a comprehensive informational packet of sup- supplemental materials that have been introduced to the bill file. In terms of the background, EBDI, as Councilman Stokes says, is 88 acres. It's located in the heart of East Baltimore and what's known as Middle East. It's located right north of Johns Hopkins Hospital, and we, um, are bounded by several other, um, communities in East Baltimore. In 2000, when EBDI was created, these are some images from how parts of the neighborhood looked at that time. And you can ask, why was EBDI created? What led up to this blight in the community was a dramatic loss of manufacturing jobs, exodus of middle-class families out to the county, um, and then there were predatory lenders and all types of flippers that were, came to the community. So that, by 2000, this neighborhood, which the Baltimore Sun referred to as Zombie Land, was 70% vacant with lots of blight, lots of blight. The residents that were living there, including my grandmother, who was relocated by EBDI, was forced to stay in high incidence of crime, unemployment, poverty, lead paint violations, and other type of disinvestment in this community. And so there was a desire at that time by stakeholders to create a transformative approach to revitalization, um, using the economic engine of our anchor institution. So EBDI was established in 2002 by Baltimore City ordinance. We do get our authority through a land disposition and development agreement executed between EBDI and the City of Baltimore. Um, over time, we anticipate $1.8 billion to be invested in this mixed-use, mixed-income project. And we are thankful and very fortunate to have continued public-private partnerships between our community residents, City of Baltimore, elected officials, the State of Maryland, Johns Hopkins University of Medicine, the Annie E. Casey Foundation, and other philanthropic supporters. EBDI does have a very long mission statement, so I won't take the time to read it today, but we have certain guiding principles that operate as the heartbeat of what we do, from community engagement, responsible relocation, making sure we preserve and celebrate historic East Baltimore in all the ways that we can, economic inclusion, affordable housing, and expanding educational opportunities. Over the 20 years that EBDI has been in operation, we have had various evolutions of our organization. In the early days, between 2002 and 2014, we had a height of 120 full-time employees, and we were focused on all of the different activities that you see listed there, primarily around our human service, um, work, our relocation, acquisition, family advocacy, workforce development, demolition of all the blighted, um, vacant buildings. Um, but we also had a master developer that was responsible for developing the first 30 acres in our project area, and we did start our economic inclusion monitoring in 2006, when we had our master developer onboard. From 2014 to 2020, you'll see a huge decline in our staff. That was because most of our relocation and human service, um, components had finished. We had also finished acquiring all of the, uh, properties in our project area, but we still had around 60 full-time employees, and we were focused still on managing our master plan, working with our master developer, infrastructure work, demolition, public safety, which you'll hear me talk about a little bit more later on. Um, and it was determined in 2018, when I was first appointed President and CEO, that EBDI was actually about to sunset. So in 2020, the thought was EBDI would wind down operations and sunset our doors. In 2020, while I was President and CEO, there was a decision that was made, um, to wind up operations, to continue having EBDI operate. There was an analysis done of whether other city agencies or other, um, organizations could take on the role of EBDI, and was determined that it was not appropriate and that it would be a huge disservice to East Baltimore to have us wind down. So instead, we ramped up. When I was President and CEO, we had five employees. We currently have three, but we did wind up our operations. We became the master developer, as opposed to having a third-party master developer. We are continuing to, um, steward our master plan. We are about to embark upon a $12 million infrastructure project, and we still have community engagement at the heart of what we do, along with economic inclusion. There's some key lessons that we've learned over the 20 years. I'm not going to talk about all of them, but I will highlight just a few. And I just want to stress and also give thanks and appreciation for our political advocates, our elected officials on the city, state, and federal levels. Their advocacy has afforded us to get public funding that was needed to do lots of our work. It also has been critical for us to maintain support from all of the gubernatorial and mayoral administrations over the 20 years that we've been in operations. The last thing I'll point out is how intentional we have to be in these type of urban revitalization projects, to be focused on our core values, and not just to talk about it, but to really make, uh, them contractual requirements, to have funding behind them, and to have policies that push them forward. Some of the challenges that EBDI has faced, we have not been immune to what many other businesses and nonprofits in Baltimore City have faced, from economic downturns, the impacts of COVID, the city's ransomware attack. We have been, um, laser-focused on continuing with the momentum that we've developed, but it has been slow due to market conditions and the impact on real estate development. We have been trying over the course of probably the last 10, 12 years to attract a grocery store to our food desert, and that has been difficult as well. In terms of governance and operations, as I mentioned, EBDI is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. I do want to stress that there is no statutory requirement or any term in our LDDA with the city that requires us to report and give an update to the City Council. However, I love to talk about EBDI, so I welcome the opportunity to give an update whenever we're invited. Um, I will share that EBDI is governed by our bylaws that serve as our legal framework. It outlines our governance structure, our board responsibilities and our operational procedures. And we do have oversight by two committees of our board, our Executive Committee and our Finance Committee. And on our board, there are appointments that have been given by the mayor, the governor, Johns Hopkins and the community. And then we, of course, have our two City Council representatives from the 12th and 13th District, Councilman Stokes and Councilman Glover, who are ex officio appointments to our board along with myself. This is just an image of our current board members. We recently went through a board recomposition that brought our board down to seven members plus our ex officio members.
Go back real quick.
Yes, sir.
This is the total board?
Yes, sir.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10. And what are the bylaws permit for total number of board members?
So right now, we just went through a board bylaw amendment, and so now it's seven voting members plus our ex officio members.
Tell me again, besides the two councilmen who are ex officio?
I am.
Oh, it says it. All I had to do was look at the roll column. Very good. So the current bylaws allow for seven voting and three ex officio?
Yes, sir.
And who is, who's Karan Watkins?
Karan Watkins is a mayoral appointee. She's currently the Assistant Director of the Mayor's Office of Civil Rights.
Okay. Okay, so city employee.
Yes, sir.
Community person. Okay. And then... So do the bylaws specify the who makes the appointments or what organizations they have to be affiliated with?
Yes, sir. And they always have.
Can you walk me through who the seven voting members or how that works in the bylaws?
Sure. So in the bylaws, the mayor has the ability to appoint four appointments. The governor can appoint one, and that's Secretary Jake Day with DHCD. And then we have one resident, which is appointed by the board. Mr. Coleman, who was here today, was part of the previous board, and so he's still there. And then the board can vote. I think that's it. That's it.
Wait, maybe I missed. So four mayoral, one gubernatorial.
Johns Hopkins.
Hopkins and then one. So the remaining six on the board would appoint the community member, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so... Okay, so Ms. McGee is a mayoral appointee.
Yes, sir.
And what's her affiliation or her role with Camden Partners? How's that associated?
Sure, she's a partner with Camden Partners. She has extensive finance background, so in terms of structuring deals.
I'm sorry, not her qualifications. What's her affiliation to EBDI?
She was recommended by and appointed by the mayor, and so she's new. She just was appointed last week.
Okay, so that's one of the mayor's four appointees, but Camden Partners itself is not affiliated with EB?
Correct. No, sir.
Okay, that's just a person the mayor appointed. Okay. And prior to the recent bylaw restructuring, what was the previous size of the board?
We could have up to 18. At the time, we had around 15.
Thank you. Please continue. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Mr. Young is no longer at Green Street. He's actually, he works for city government. Isn't that correct?
I haven't gotten that update yet, so.
Okay. We'll wait for Councilwoman. I'm going to ask you to restate that question when Mr. Schneller from the Mayor's Office gets back. I asked him to run out and grab a representative from the Department of Law, so we'll pose that question for him. Thank you. Ms. Washington, please continue.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
Madam CEO, the size of the board was just reduced. Can you explain, because there's not as many community people on the board anymore? And that's very disturbing to me, because it affects what happens in the community, affects the people that live in the community. So can you tell me what was the board members at first? What's the current members on there? And who made the decision to remove, make it smaller and remove community people off the board?
So the original composition per our bylaws called for six mayoral appointees, two appointees from Hopkins, two from the Annie E. Casey Foundation, one from the State of Maryland, two from the councilmatic districts could appoint, could nominate somebody. And I believe we also had five at-large board members. I hope I got that right. And so in June, the board voted to reduce the size of our board for efficiency. When we had a larger board, we also had five standing committees. And so you can imagine managing a board with a smaller staff with five different committees. So there was a decision that was made to reduce the size of the board by the board. The board had to vote on that.
So the board, somebody had to make the decision. Where did the decision come from? Not just the board, you the CEO. It's very disturbing that you remove community people off of that board who've been fighting the whole project in Baltimore. And to remove them off the board, and then you say, well, what board? Who? Somebody had to make a decision to reduce that board and remove the community people off the board. It had to come from somebody. It just can't say there's a board.
So, Councilman, I do want to note that because Ms. Washington's an ex officio and non-voting member, but I do want to dive a little bit back more into that topic. But let's let Ms. Washington continue her presentation, but we're going to come back to that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councilman Stokes. So just to give you a sense of our current organization, there are three of us, myself, our Vice President of Finance and Operations, and Antonia Daniels, who's here with me today, who's our Manager of Grants and Strategic Initiatives. Our current organizational priorities, we're focused on real estate development. I'll share more updates about that later on in the presentation. We are focused on finance and compliance. We are the recipient of several federal-state grants, and so that's very important to us. We are also focused on funding development. We have to raise money to do things like our infrastructure work and other community-based initiatives. And then community engagement is very important. Councilman Stokes spoke about transparency. We do have regular community meetings with the community. We have regular board meetings, which are open to the public. We do post on our website all of our independent annual audits. So we do try and be as transparent as possible. In terms of our fiscal management and oversight, I'll share on our board, we currently have a treasurer. We also have a finance and audit committee that reviews our budget and approves them. They do our regular review of our financial statements, our annual audit, as well as our tax documents. We do get an annual audit every year. Thanks to Councilman Stokes' advocacy, a couple of years ago, we just rebid that workout and we have engaged not only RSM, but a local minority company to do our tax preparation, and that's Burt Smith &amp; Company. On staff, I mentioned we have our VP of Operations, who manages all of our fiscal responsibilities. And then from our operational funding perspective, we do get money from the City of Baltimore, Johns Hopkins, grants. And then the proceeds from our real estate transactions help to fund our operations. And we see, and you see the uses of those funds listed on the PowerPoint.
So Ms. Washington, I'm going to pause for a second. Councilwoman Ramos, if you want to ask Mr. Schneller the question you had.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Washington, have you gone back to the slide that has the board roster?
And I'm also looking for it on my... Okay. I just noticed that Mr. Young, Calvin Young, it says the affiliation is Green Street Partners, but I believe he's now part of the administration. Is that correct?
That is true.
And his role?
Say it again.
Yeah, what is his role with the administration?
He is a senior advisor to the mayor.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we have that corrected on the...
I'll correct that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's more on EBDI than the Mayor's Office. This was the EBDI presentation. And just a quick question, Mr. Schneller, as you know, I like to ask, who does Mr. Young report directly to? He reports to the mayor or the CAO?
Let me get that clarification and then I'll follow up.
Thank you so much. Please continue.
So at this time, I would like to, I'm going to be introducing Graylin Smith with SB and Company, but I will share that when EBDI was approaching its 20-year milestone, there was a desire by our major stakeholders to commission an investment audit to determine how the investments in EBDI have impacted the community. And there was an RFP that was issued. SB and Company was selected through that RFP process. And their audit focused on a review of the 20 years of investment to ensure compliance with the funding goals. I've asked Graylin Smith to come and give a brief summary of his audit methodology and his findings. Mr. Smith?
Sir, sir, before you begin, there's two buttons on the bottom of your mic. Click the one on the, there you go. And try and keep this about six inches away. You can pull that wireless headset closer to you. Or you could pull the whole thing if you want, or you can move up, whatever's more. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go through briefly to go through the objectives of the review we performed. We performed a compliance review, which was really looking for compliance with the terms of the funders and the spending associated from those funders. Air organization was to analyze and evaluate the expenditures that were incurred over the first 20 years of EBDI. It was to determine whether the funding was spent, for funders were spent consistent with the objectives that were established by the funders that had provided the money. We had to determine what were the compliance requirements that the funders had put as requirements associated with the funds. We reviewed the major funders over the period to really understand the objectives of what they were trying to have accomplished with their funds. And we also wanted to do a test of expenditures to make sure that the expenditures were incurred consistent with achieving the objectives of the funders. The results and observations of air review, we reviewed the 11 funding sources over the 20-year period. That represented any funders that were, had contributed over 3% of the funds during that period. We had tested $230 billion out of $380 million in funding. Air observations from that review was first that EBDI did not set up a system to properly attract, track revenue and expenditures by project and by funder over the period. We also noted that the record retention policy was not prepared to be able to properly track and keep track of records over that period of years. We were going back and looking for records over a 20-year period and could not find all the records. And how they were stored was not consistent, that you could easily go and retrieve the records that you needed. We noted because of that also, we could not support, support for all of the transactions that we tried to locate during the period. We also noted that at the end of each of the funding contract period, there was really not a closeout. A closeout for a funding source or for a grant is a process that you go through and document and determine that you had complied with all of the terms related to the funder and that you did a reconciliation of how much of the money did you spend? And did you spend all of that? Do you owe money back to the funder? Or did you overspend the amount that the funder had provided? We did not find any indications of fraud, non-compliance or improper payments during the period. However, our review was not a fraud review. It was a compliance review. However, if we had found any indications of fraud, we would need to bring that to the attention. Our results of air review, we had three overriding recommendations that we made to EBDI, which would give better oversight of those funds. The first item was design an accounting system that would allow to be able to track information and spending by both project and funding source over the period of time of the project and also of the funding source. And so because the system was not set up that way, it was difficult to get lots of information and we had to piece that together. The second thing is a formal record retention system because of the fact that they would need to keep the records and support because of the length of time of the projects and some of these funding sources to really set a process so that they could go and actually find specific documentation when they would have to go back to show support for whether it was expenditures, whether it was grant agreements or whether it was terms related to compliance with agreements. And the last item is setting up a formal grant accounting and management process, which would actually include periodic reporting of statuses of grants as well as a closeout of grants, which was the process that I had explained that you would want to do at the end of a grant period. So those were the three recommendations that we had as a result of the work that we had performed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I do want to share that EBDI has taken those recommendations to heart. We had already started putting in place certain measures and protocols that would improve the observations that Mr. Smith made. And even most recently, we are in the process of migrating to a new accounting software program that would allow us to do the tracking that he mentioned. I want to now turn our attention to responsible redevelopment, which is what EBDI calls its approach to redevelopment. I'm going to highlight two of our core value programs, but you see that the thread that runs through all of our real estate development projects are the core values that are listed on this page. Many of them, like affordable housing, economic development, food access, those are things that have been lifted up by the community and EBDI has endeavored to meet those needs where we could. But I'm going to focus on economic inclusion and community reinvestment fund for the purpose of this presentation. For economic inclusion, just to give you some background, EBDI has a very robust and comprehensive economic inclusion policy. It's a contractual requirement for every real estate deal, so it's attached to the developer's agreement and they have to in turn attach it to the general contractor agreement. We do have goals for all of our projects. We assess penalties to our developers for non-compliance, so we do hold folks accountable. And the proceeds for those penalties support our community reinvestment fund. We have a partnership with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development for local hiring. And we created a local vendor directory for developers and contractors to use as a resource for finding local businesses. Since 2006, EBDI has had a third-party monitor to monitor all of our real estate projects for compliance and verification of participation. We've had three monitors to date. Our most recent is the Nelson Ideation Group, and you're going to hear from Normitha Goodrum in a few minutes. I will share that our inclusion goals relate to minority equity ownership at the developer level. We look for minority prime contracting and joint ventures. Our subcontracting goals are 27% participation by MBEs, 8% by WBEs and 20% by LBEs. And then we have goals related to local hiring for Baltimore City and East Baltimore workers. I'm now going to ask Normitha Goodrum to speak to TNIG's monitoring and verification process.
Good morning. I am Normitha Goodrum and I am the Economic Inclusion Program Manager through the Nelson Ideation Group or TNIG. TNIG is a business management consulting firm with a focus on economic inclusion, workforce development and community development. The Nelson Ideation Group was contracted with EBDI to provide EI monitoring services July of 2021. TNIG has developed a monitoring and verification process, and that's what I will go through, an overview of that process. The first part of the process is a document review. And all of the developers and general contractors have access to the Dropbox platform. They submit all of the required forms into that Dropbox platform. The forms that they need to submit are the economic inclusion plans, the manpower projection... the manpower projection plans, the local new hire forms, payroll forms, contract agreements, purchase orders, lien releases, as well as cancel checks and payment rosters. Once those documents have been submitted into the Dropbox, the Nelson Ideation, uh, group goes through a process of reviewing those documents. Those documents are reviewed and, uh, and then entered into a tracking system that has been developed, um, by TNIG. That document verification process includes checking for minority and women-owned business certification through the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore. Also checking for, uh, verification of residency for businesses as well as workers. Um, this requires, uh, in some cases, checking to make sure that, um, businesses and residents that are working on the project, those workers that are Baltimore City residents working on the project are indeed, uh, residents. Um, there are some situations where zip codes overlap, uh, into Baltimore County. So we do do a thorough check to make sure that those, uh, addresses, um, are Baltimore City addresses so that credit can be given. We also check with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation to check on the standing, good standing for any of the contractors participating on those, uh, projects that we are monitoring. And then, uh, we check for local new hires and we also check the spend. We track payments, um, that are made to the minority women, local-owned businesses. Lastly is the reporting. Once all of the information has been reviewed, has been tracked, and the data has been input into our TNIG system, that information then goes to the Sage Policy Group, uh, who has a data analyst that synthesizes all of that data and puts it into a report reflecting graphs, charts, and tables that identifies the status of, uh, where, uh, developers and contractors are with meeting those MWBE and LBE goals as well as workforce goals. The Nelson Ideation Group, um, Sage Policy, and EBDI meet with the developers and general contractors bi-monthly to go over where, uh, the project is as far as meeting those economic inclusion goals. And then that process starts all over again.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrum. So based on this monitoring process, I do just want to give some stats to you can know how EBDI is varying when it comes to economic inclusion. We are proud to say that we've exceeded all of our goals except for one, which is WB, WBE goals, which I understand across the city, it's really difficult to meet that goal. But for our MBE goal, which is 27%, you can see that we are achieving 32.8%. For our local business goal of 20%, you can see that we are at 35.8%. When it comes to the labor hour, um, information, even though the number of workers is not necessarily a goal, we do break down and collect data on the racial composition of all of the workers in our project area. But we do have a goal for labor hours. And so you can see for our, uh, Baltimore City labor hour goal that we, it's 25%, but we have been achieving 31.1% of all the labor hours worked in EBDI's project area to go to Baltimore City workers. And our East Baltimore goal is 12% and we are far exceeding that at 16.9%. While we don't have a goal related to average wage or retention of workers, we do track this information. You'll see that our average hourly wage for all workers is $23.38. And for Baltimore City, it's $20. And East Baltimore is $19, which far exceed the Baltimore City living wage of $15.38. I will also say that we retain and have been able to retain 567 workers on the various projects over the 20 years of EBDI's, um, lifetime. Related to our community reinvestment fund, let me just share that this has been a long outstanding, uh, goal and promise to the community. We are working diligently to get this, uh, stand, stood up. Just to give you some background, it is envisioned to be a loan and grant fund to support small business and minority businesses, community-based organizations and workforce development initiatives in East Baltimore. And not just the 88 acres, but the larger East Baltimore footprint. Um, the fund was required in a 2002 Minority Inclusion Agreement that was executed. But at that time, there was no implementation plan that was specified. In 2012, it was determined, um, through a special committee chaired by Senator Nathaniel McFattin, that the funding sources identified in that Minority Inclusion Agreement were determined to either be ineligible for this use or they were not practically feasible. So they never came to fruition. So in 2015, EBDI updated a plan to identify new funding sources. But during that time, even before funding sources were identified, EBDI did work and spend, um, its own money to support the establishment of a local minority, um, business, which spun out of EBDI's Public Safety Department, um, frontline management services to provide the security, cleaning and greening, and trash removal, snow removal, and other enhanced services to our project area. Um, and, uh, 2015, we did receive our first infusion of funding through the former master developer for City New East Baltimore Partnership of $150,000. And then, as I mentioned, we assessed penalties from a non-compliant developer of $106,000 that went into the community reinvestment fund. In 2022, the EBDI Board approved a new, uh, updated plan that identified sources and additional uses of the fund. I'll share that in 2023, EBDI approved, um, 750,000, 700, 7,500 of those dollars to assist the East End Garage, which is one of our longstanding legacy black-owned businesses in the project area. Um, we use those funds to match other funds that came from the State Department of Housing and Community Development to help with their facade improvements. And currently, we have $255,000 in our, an interest-bearing account to allocate to the, uh, community reinvestment fund. Our next step is to formally establish a mechanism to not only govern, uh, and manage the fund, but also to ensure that we allocate proceeds from our real estate projects to that fund. That is going to be, um, advised by our elected officials, our community residents, who are going to be involved in all aspects of that process. For real estate development, and I'm going to try and speed this up because I know I'm probably over time. But I do want to share that EBDI is now, um, I want to share our role and, because there's sometimes some confusion about EBDI's role in real estate development. We serve as the community development organization to manage this complex, uh, master plan. We have developed projects in the past that are considered community beneficial projects, such as the East Baltimore Community School Campus, the Five Acre Park, um, the 929 Student Housing Building. Um, but really, we don't serve as developer, um, in the general terms. Right now, we are the master developer. We became the master developer in 2022. And we now issue RFPs for residential and commercial projects. We sell land to selected developers. We receive proceeds from these sales only when projects go to closing. And the proceeds support EBDI's operations and our community initiatives. We do assist developers with securing public funding. And we also secure funding for infrastructure. And then we monitor the projects for economic inclusion, for timeliness, and for other, um, and to make sure we keep the community apprised of the progress. The timing of real estate development depends on the developer's ability to secure financing, market conditions, navigating city processes, securing subsidies, et cetera. It is a long road to get real estate development projects done. This is a map of our project area. I just want to highlight that everything in blue, all the parcels in blue are projects that EBDI has been able to complete over the course of our 20 years. That's around 60% of our master plan. Those projects in yellow are projects that are available for future real estate development. And the projects that are in green are active projects right now, either under contract and in various stages of pre-development. I'm excited to say that on our runway, we have many, many opportunities um, that are going to be coming before you. For the active projects, for residential, I just listed them here. We have Henderson Crossing that's doing 46 for sale, um, housing. Uh, Rebuilt Metro is doing 25, um, for-sale housing that they've completed, but they've done many more than that. Um, Parcel ABAC South, which is coming before, uh, the Planning Commission on October 10th, is going to be doing 50 for-sale housing units. And they'll be ready to break, uh, ground hopefully by the summer of next year. Um, and then Parcel B is going to be a market rate, um, rental building, which will be the first market rate rental building in our project area. All of our other rental buildings have been affordable housing. And then, um, we have two other projects coming up. Um, the sale of a property that people know as Micah Place, which is 806 Collington. We're going to be selling that to another nonprofit. And then a major public infrastructure project that I'm going to speak about now. It's going to be in the southeast section of our project area along Ashland Avenue. Um, this is right in front of the Henderson Hopkins School. If anybody drives through our community, you'll see exactly why we need to get infrastructure done. I'm delighted that we've gotten federal, um, a federal earmark through Congressman Infume and other support. Um, we've also gotten state dollars as well to help get this infrastructure project going. We just, um, are in the process of selecting a project manager and plan on bidding out the project to find a general contractor in the next month or so. Okay. And this is, I think this is my last one. So just in terms of what's coming up in the future, EBDI has, um, six parcels that we're going to be issuing an expression of interest to get developed. Um, that expression of interest will be coming out in the latter part of October. And, um, I just want to conclude by saying that EBDI has accomplished a lot. It's in the numbers when you look at our economic inclusion stats. When you look at the value of E, of, uh, Eager Park, when the EBDI TIF was issued, it was only $12.6 million. That area is now assessed a value of $414 million. So when you look at the number of residents and businesses that have come to Baltimore City in our project area, I think you all can see why I'm so passionate and enthusiastic about completing this master plan. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity again to present this information.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a number of things. I want to thank the auditors for coming and explaining. We appreciate that. Um, I asked for that impact audit back in January or February, maybe before then. I got a copy of it today. Today. I've been calling, asking for the audit. It get kicking the can down the road. Somebody else have it. I gotta get it from somebody else. How can I understand an audit when you're gonna have a, have a hearing and I get the email today for the audit? That's the transparency piece I'm talking about. I have some questions that I did send to Madam CEO. And I see you have the data, but some of the questions were MBE. We want the list of names of all African-Americans firms that were awarded contracts. I see the numbers, but I want to know who the contractors were. Same thing with WBE. Breakdown by African-Americans. Local business contractor, list amounts and names of LBE. Local HAN, detail of local labor. Local HAN, average hourly wage, community reinvestment fund. I've been hearing about that for five years. Five years. We need bank statements. When was the bank account open? Current balance in account and receipts of grants. Name of the business, amount, date grants were awarded. But it's funny, in the presentation, you talked about, um, Mr. Bonaparte Business and you talked about Eastern Forum. But when I send you these questions and ask for the names of local HAN contractors that you have given contracts, I didn't got, didn't get that. I got some percentage numbers. So, Mr. Chair, my request, the questions that I sent to the CEO, those, that's the information that I asked for? The, the, the firms, the contractors who were awarded contracts? I need that information. So that's a request, that these questions that I requested.
Um, Ms. Washington, if you can address that?
Councilman Stokes, thank you for that. We did submit that to you, the detailed information. For confidentiality purposes, we do not, we're not able to share the dollar values in public. But we gave you the list of all the, the businesses and residents by race. So you'll have the African-American ones and all the other races. It's in your email, so you have that. We also provided, I'm sorry. We also, um, provided a preview of the impact audit at our July board meeting. Mr. Smith came and presented a full presentation to the board. And, um, so that information has been out there since July.
Well, when I talked to you today, I asked you about the impact audit. And you told me you gave it to Maria Tilden. All I'm saying is, you gotta be transparent about this. And you have not been transparent from the beginning. It's been not even January. The community been asking about the impact audit. You sent it to me, okay, that's fine. But you didn't share it with the community. Then you want me to meet with the, the, the auditors? And I hadn't even got the impact audit yet. And you told me that we gave it to Cheryl Tilden and I had to wait and get it from Maria Tilden. I'm sorry. So it's, again, being transparent, not just with me, but with the community. We need to have a bigger meeting with the community so they can, you can share this with them. And so they'll understand what this mean, even the auditors. A couple of the residents, rural east, know who the auditors. But a lot of people that live in the community don't know who the auditors are.
Yes, sir. That, that would be fine. And I'll just share that, um, EBDI was not in control of the audit. This was done by the stakeholders. And so in terms of how it was disseminated, I know there was a, um, a, a strong desire to make sure that all of the stakeholders, stakeholders had a chance to review it. Plus, some of the funders that were also mentioned in the report had a chance to review it. So I do agree that it took a long time, but the audit was just completed in March. And then in July, the, um, audit firm came and presented to our board. And we shared the, um, report during that meeting. And then we issued the full report, um, as you got.
And I just had one more question from Mr. Tyler Law. Why was the president and CEO, Mr. Colin Tarbert, was removed from EBDI Board? And this summer, how did that make sense?
Councilman, you know, we're not going to talk about any personnel matters in the council chambers.
Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, good morning. Uh, so just, just some questions. Um, I was looking through the presentation. So just so I can understand the organization a little better. So this is a quasi-city, uh, agency organization. And what's, and I see it says since 2002. So what's like the annual budget for this, this organization?
Sure. So EBDI is a 501(c)(3) separate nonprofit. But we do operate under the authority through our LDDA, which is why there can be that confusion in terms of it being quasi-governmental. Um, we, our current budget is around $1.5 million.
Okay. And where, and where does that money come from?
It comes from a variety of sources. We get, uh, operating grant from the city of Baltimore. We also get operating grant from Johns Hopkins. Then we other get philanthropic grants. And then we also get the proceeds from our real estate transactions.
So how much, how much of that comes from the city?
$400,000.
$400,000, okay. And this is, this is only, um, is, do you guys have a counterpart on the west side that is getting the same?
Hmm, I know that there are other real estate developments, but I don't, like the Park Heights Renaissance and things like that. But I don't, I'm not aware of what their budget and operating support is.
Gotcha, okay. And so when, when developments are built, um, do you, you guys are the project managers over that? And, or you're just support staff?
Great question. So EBDI, as the landowner and as the community development organization, we manage the developers. But the developers are responsible for making sure that the project, um, gets built. And then they also hire the general contractor. They manage all the subs. But they are responsible to EBDI through our purchase and sales agreement. So they have to comply with economic inclusion. They have to report on their, you know, timelines and things like that.
Gotcha. And so, so in, in this past, I guess now 22 years, how many like, how many units have been created? New units have been created where people have moved into? I know I see, I saw in the presentation, there was a lot of, of things for, for sale or new things that were coming online, uh, which, which looks very exciting. But I'm saying just in the past 22 years, how many new, new things were created?
That's a great question. Actually, I don't want to rattle off a number, but I want to say it's close to around over... but I want to say it's close to around over 700 or so. But I'll give you the exact date. I can submit that to the council at a later date. So I can give you the exact numbers.
Gotcha. And so the 700, those are all apartments or are they houses?
Great question. They are a combination. So our first units that we developed in the project area were three affordable rental buildings, one for seniors and two for working families. And now we also have luxury townhomes and other affordable for-sale properties that are also been built in our project area. So a combination.
Gotcha. But the 700, those have already been, those already have new renters or homeowners in them?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. And so with these developers that you guys, like, that you provide the support to, do they contribute anything towards that? Towards your overall $1.5 million budget?
So to the extent that, so let me also back up and say that EBDI, for the first time since we're the master developer, we're now poised to actually receive the proceeds from those real estate transactions. Prior to that, most of the development that had been done was under the auspices of our master developer. So now we're at a point where when we close, we have two projects that are going to be closing over the next six months or so. And those proceeds will come into EBDI to support our operations.
Gotcha. And so do you have a breakdown that you can provide the committee of like what years these units came online?
Yes, we do. Actually, in the supplemental materials that I submitted, that'll be part of your bill file, there's a timeline that speaks to that. And there's also a very detailed map with the key that speaks to each of our parcels and what was developed on those parcels.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I appreciate that. I'm gonna take a look at that.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
I kind of copied the questions that was posed by Councilman Stokes, so.
Okay, I was just concerned because you're Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually looking at that map that you had sent out. So I have a couple of questions. One is, and if you covered this while I was out, I had to take a phone call, so I apologize. So it looks like there's a combination of various different types of housing and some of the, you know, the wet labs and some of the, you know, Hopkins-related pieces. Are you tracking the residents that were asked to leave, asked, made to leave the area and where those residents are now? And are they allowed to come back? And are you actually doing the work to get them back into their neighborhood?
Great question. So EBDI, just to give a little bit of background, as part of our relocation process, there was a formal tracking of residents for five years post-relocation. And we had staff to do that level of tracking, provide support, assistance with tax credit, applications and all types of foreclosure prevention, housing counseling and things like that. Currently, with the three staff that we have, the level of tracking is not as much as I would like. I'll be candid with you. But we do have a program called our Opportunity to Return. And we work with our developers. So every time there's a new housing opportunity that comes online, we do reach out to the residents that have indicated that they would like to come back to see if any of those housing options would be attractive to them. To date, we have around 10% of our legacy residents who've either returned or stayed in our project area. And we actually have a monetary benefit to help families with either the closing cost for for-sale housing or with application fees for the rental properties. There was a period of time when our funding was more, where we also put in our budget a subsidy. It's like a placeholder. So if any homeowner decided they wanted to come back, we know the price point of the house that they moved to may be less than, you know, the price point of a house in our project area. And our calculations was around up to a $45,000 subsidy that a household might need. So to the extent that we had funding, we kept that as a placeholder. More recently, with some of the economic downturn and some of our funding challenges, we've had to remove that. But it is a goal that once we can bring in more revenue, that we'd be able to position that again to also do the outreach and be able to really see if residents would want to come back.
But you just mentioned that you haven't, the requirement was the tracking for the first five years.
Correct.
It's been significantly more time now. And I'll have another question about the timing in a second. But so once you have those funds to try to bring people back, you haven't been tracking them. So you don't know where they are?
So we did do a very comprehensive outreach. But that was in 2015, the last time that we were able to do that. And we were able to identify and find of our 742 families, we were able to actually identify around 550 of them and find out where they're located.
And do you have, are you have that in a database now? And you're still able to talk?
We do have a database, but that data is probably outdated because that was in 2015.
And do you have a plan to work through that to try to find them again?
That has not been a topic yet at our board level, so we would have to...
I thought that was a promise that was made to the residents is that they would be able to come back.
So the promise, that was a promise that we made if they chose to. Many of our families don't, are choosing not to come back because even in our survey that we did...
Well, they're not given the opportunity because nobody's reaching out to them.
Well, they were. We haven't had any, so they were given the opportunity. And when we did the survey, it was a very small number of people said they wanted to come back. So that's been who we've reached out to.
And how did you do the survey? Did you do it electronically or did you call them?
No, no.
Or did you go and talk to them?
It was a very comprehensive. We called, we went door knocking, did mailers. Very comprehensive outreach that was done.
Okay, I might have more on that. The second piece is, this project has been going on for a really, 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 really long time. Can you talk a little bit about the delays in why we're not seeing progress in some parts of EBDI?
Sure. I mean, I think it's all about perspective. I'll just say that. We've completed 60% of our master plan, which by all accounts is actually remarkable. Especially when you think about the housing recession of 2008. You think about the current high interest rates, the COVID and, you know, just other market factors that have prevented others from achieving what we have. These type of projects, a lesson learned, is they take a lot of time. When I go across the country and I'm talking about EBDI and what we're doing here in Baltimore, other cities are amazed. And we've only been able to do that because of the consistent support from various mayoral administrations, various gubernatorial administrations at the federal level. It's unheard of for a project of this nature to be developed in 10 years. And so I know originally, there was a thought that EBDI should be done in 10 years. But it really takes a lot longer for this type of transformative real estate development to take place.
I'm aware that it does take time.
It does.
We've had two economic downturns during that timeframe as well. I'm including the pandemic in that. But, you know, I do think that there's, you know, this seems like such an opportunity. I'm not sure what the problem, was it more around just not being able to get the capital stack together? Was it more, I mean, if you could give me some specifics other than economic downturn because kind of that was everybody's issue? I mean, that would be helpful.
Sure. I mean, a lot of this has to also do with the ability for developers to get financing. And it also has to do with getting through city entitlement and permitting processes. I think it also has to do with attracting new development to an area that was so heavily disinvested at one point in time. I think all of those things factor into what we've been able to complete. We also had, you know, two master developers who were working along with us who also had challenges with the life science industry, which has also had a lot of impact on leasing up commercial and, you know, life science space. So I would say all of those different factors have certainly contributed to the slow nature.
So do you mean that the life sciences piece was more around the fact that there was just, I remember the talking about, you know, we're going to bring the life sciences here and the life sciences just decided not to come?
Well, I think across the country, the life science industry has had a huge impact to it. Even when you look at Philadelphia or MIT, many life science parks that were envisioned, they had to halt. I mean, Brookfield Properties, which is a global real estate development firm, which was our master developer, they acquired Forest City. They also sold their whole entire life science portfolio because of the downturn in the life science space. So it's very, very challenging.
But we have other sciences that could be, you know, replacing them, right? There's the wet labs, there's AI, which we won't comment on what I'm dealing with. But, you know, there's a lot more here. So why isn't that exploration happening to try to bring in? You know, there's been talk about doing a tech district in the city and what does that even look like? And it sounds like this could be that opportunity. Is that something that you're pursuing?
It is. It's something that we're pursuing by pursuing a developer who knows how to develop life science spaces. So one of the parcels...
You just said that life science was on a downturn. So I'm talking about technology and other types of science.
Cyber is responding to, in terms of what was the delays, that the impact to the life science industry has had an impact. Because we did have another parcel out for bid. And we were closely negotiating with the developer. And they had challenges with leasing up the space that would allow the numbers to pencil. So it really is more than just, it just requires a lot to attract businesses to East Baltimore, for one. Even with the great anchor institution like Johns Hopkins. And so developers have to be, you know, able to make the deal pencil or else it'll be difficult to get a building built. And so we work, you know, when we find developers, we want them to be experienced in that ability to do that. And so that is going to be one of the parcels that we're going to be issuing in that expression of interest coming up in October. So we're hoping for better turnout than what was happening the last year or so.
So you're expanding beyond just the life sciences?
Well, it could be life science or commercial space. Right now, the expression of interest is going to be for developers to tell us what they think could be feasible in our project area, whether it's commercial, retail, life science, residential. That's why we want to have the experts be able to tell us this is what they think.
Oh, okay. So you're not restricting it to, like, doing the science and technology? You're just trying to see...
Correct. It could be commercial, office space or others.
Got it, okay. Thank you. I have more questions, but I'll yield for the next round. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you explain, I know we had conversations over the past in reference to the property that was purchased by Baltimore Safe Haven? Can you explain to the board exactly what was the price of the purchase to Baltimore Safe Haven? I know I see that the closing should be November of this year.
Yes.
And could you just explain to the council the purchase of it? And I know that it was estimated, I think, at a higher value. And what was the reason to purchase? To sell it for the purchase that you did sell it for?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. So the property that Councilman Glover is referring to is 806 Collington Street. And that property EBDI acquired, I'm going to say back in 2012 or '13. At that time, it was envisioned and it actually came to fruition for MICA, the Maryland Institute College of Art, to lease that building from EBDI. They invested, you know, millions of dollars to upgrade it. And they wanted to use it as their satellite community arts program. MICA leased that building up until 2019. So right, actually, no, 2020, because it was right around COVID that they decided to not terminate, I mean, not to renew their lease with us. And so at that time, the MICA was allowing some community organizations to use the space for free, to provide programming to the community. And when EBDI found itself in a position where they owned this building, keep in mind, we had five employees at that time, we in the board determined that our best course of action would be to sell the building and to find a buyer. We had the property on the market for around a year and a half, almost two years, before we got one offer, which then fell through. And then Baltimore Safe Haven, which is a nonprofit in Baltimore City, is under contract now to buy it. And the purchase price, I believe, is $1.7 million.
Okay. And is there a reason? Or can you explain to us the reasoning for, I know why you sold it? You thought it was the best interest of EBDI to sell the property. Why wasn't the property, like, given back to the city of Baltimore?
So it wasn't a city property. It was originally owned by St. Ambrose. And so EBDI acquired it from St. Ambrose. So it was a private sale. It wasn't a, that wasn't one of the city-owned properties.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So most of my questions were in the appendix. So thank you for pointing that out. The only one I did have remaining, Mr. Chair, because I had questions about the MBE stuff. But that was in the back. It doesn't set a goal for, there was like a subcategory of WBEs for black-owned WBEs, but they didn't have a goal for that. Can you speak to what the goal should be? If it was a typo or the reason that it's not there? And how we can better engage that particular community in contracting?
That's a great question, and thank you for that. So EBDI based our inclusion goals on the city's inclusion goals. And so there are minority business entities and WBEs. And they have to be certified either by the city of Baltimore or the state of Maryland. There's no specific goal on a specific race category. So African American, for instance, is no specific goal. So what we did though, because we do know that our project area was 96% African American. And so we do know in terms of the impact that we want to have, that we have been asked by our elected officials and others to track certain information, even though we don't have a goal associated with it. So that's why we're able to provide the data that we share with you on those businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll cycle back through in the same order, Councilman Stokes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at your map of the EBDI boundaries.
Yes.
Most of these properties, I guess, have been developed. Are we collecting property tax off of these properties? One is, that's one question. Second one, Parcel C. What is the gray area? What is that? I don't know what that means. Could you explain everything else? You got Parcel C in the gray area and have some up here. Is Parcel C a piece of property? Has it been put out for bid or anything?
No, sir. So the parcels that are gray, that's a great question. Those are parcels that right now don't have a particular development plan for them. Those are probably going to be further out. What I will share, so for instance, Parcel C is owned, one-third of the lots are owned by mayor and city council. Two-thirds are owned by Johns Hopkins. I don't know about if they're incurring, paying taxes. I don't know that information.
I wasn't talking about the ones you currently already developed.
So the ones where properties, you know, homeowners have bought, they're paying taxes. I'm sure that the other commercial properties are paying the appropriate taxes to the city based on, you know, the regulations that are in place.
And you, I'm sorry.
No, 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 sorry.
Go ahead. So Parcel C, no interest at all? Nobody's interested in developing that right now?
As of right now, there's no plan for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Schleifer. Ramos, then Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad my colleagues started asking about the tax payments. I have some questions about the arrangements with the TIF. So I'm still digging into this, so some of these questions might be a little basic. I apologize. So my understanding is that, you know, back in 2001, there was the TIF district as well as, you know, the authority to float the bonds. The bonds, some of the bonds have been floated? How many of, how much has been floated so far?
I will have to ask Munich Cap. Because Munich Cap is the agency that reports and tracks the TIF on behalf of the city. So I would, you know, certainly take your questions and get them to answer them.
Okay. And then, because what we, you know, what we know is that there has to be a source to be able to pay those back. And so if we're not, and so the question ends up being, we did create, I was not on the council at the time. The council at the time created the TIF district, which would then have a special tax to be able to pay back those bonds. And so who, which of these parcels that are on this map are the ones that are supposed to be paying that, those bonds? Because they would normally be paying property taxes, but they are not because we have to put those, that money into the bond payments.
That is a great question. And there's a report that I believe Munich Cap does generate related to the TIF that could answer that question. So I could take that back and we could get Munich Cap to issue that report.
Yeah, I would be interested in that. I think it's part of the annual report that the Comptroller's Office did. And because what I'm curious about is whether or not there's enough revenue there right now since we haven't had the full footprint developed. And part of it, most of it, is still owned by Johns Hopkins, which does not pay property taxes. since we haven't had the full footprint developed and part of it, most of it is still owned by Johns Hopkins, which does not pay property taxes. So I do know that there's, I think the hotel, I believe, has, does do some payments into the fund. I believe that the, you know, there may be a couple of others. But I would like to really dig into this because, you know, it's, it's my understanding that there has been underperformance in terms of being able to have a funding source to be able to pay off those bonds.
What I will share in addition to getting you the report is that all of the bonds that were issued for the EBDI TIF, they're being repaid per the terms of those agreements. So the Munich Cap issued that report. We submitted a response to city council-
It's in your response that you submitted earlier?
Correct.
Okay, I'll look back at that. Because I, I know that there was at some point in time where those were not, if, if I understand it correctly, not always being paid back. And so, you know, any EKC or Hopkins was working on figuring all of that out.
Sure. I, I definitely would encourage you to read the report that we issued in response because from my understanding, all of the bonds that were issued for the EBDI TIF specifically have been getting repaid.
And so the, you rely then on Munich Cap solely to be able to figure out this math? Because the bonds were used to pay for the infrastructure. Is that correct? So you never saw it? You, EB, EBDI never saw the money? They, it was used to be able to do some of the work on the infrastructure?
And other items as well. We spoke in the report what all the TIF funds were used for.
Yeah, the response I don't think got that specific, so I'll check again.
And if not, we can certainly get you that information. We have a breakdown of what those funds were used for. I know it was more than just infrastructure, but I just, I want to make sure I give you the correct information. And we do have it in a report.
All right. And then to my colleague's question about the tax revenues. So once the bonds are paid off, we would get these tax revenues. But again, if some of the land is still owned by Hopkins, what is your, I mean, I think that we're, we're trying, I'm, the, the land, the map here doesn't say who owns.
Right. Because currently Johns Hopkins owns very little in our project area. So parcel C, they own two-thirds of the lots.
Oh, that's where the two-thirds came from.
Right. Not two-thirds of all the parcels, just of that particular parcel.
Got it. And so the rest of this is either city property or it's under one of the other. Okay.
Correct.
But it's also not generating taxes because it's still city property. So, you know, in terms of revenue generation, what we're trying to figure out is making sure that this is still going to be able to-
Right. So of the, so there are eight remaining parcels that have yet to be developed. Six of which will be part of the expression of interest we'll be issuing later on this month. And so, but 60% of the parcels have already been developed and should be paying taxes to support city of Baltimore.
Okay. I'll look into that a little bit further and I may have some more questions on that. And then the totally not related to the TIF piece, my other ques, I may come back to it, but one of my other questions was about the board. The board obviously was reduced and that's a concern of my two colleagues who are on the board as ex officio. And it's also my concern, has there been like a citizen advisory board set up? Or any other way that you're getting community input on, you know, what's happening? Because you're about to, you know, issue an RFP for expressions of interest for six parcels, which is actually pretty significant. Did any community member have any say in what was going to be issued? Does any of the neighborhoods around there been a part of the process? How are you engaging the 500 residents that, you know, were here but are now gone and that you still tracked? Even though it was 740? Just trying to get a sense of what that public input has been on. Obviously, there was a master plan, so you're obviously keeping going on the master plan. Just trying to figure out how else the public is getting, is able to be involved in this work to transform this area.
That's a great question. So EBDI does, as I mentioned, we do have one resident on our board. But in addition to that, we do work with our neighborhood associations and there are around five of them in our project area. We also have regular community meetings where we share updates. Our last one was in March. The next one is coming up in October. And so those are the opportunities where community residents can give input and also get update, updates on, on EBDI. And most community residents who know me also know that they can also call me. And we can, you know, if they have any specific things they want to talk about. But I will share that we are, we do have a master plan. It has been approved and so we're working towards that goal. And similarly for our infrastructure project, we will be having community meetings about that so that everybody's well aware. We can figure out coordination and so there's not too much disruption, although it's going to be some disruption. But we do pride ourselves on trying to be transparent, keep people involved. Our board will review the expression of interest before it's issued. And if we need to share it, we probably will share it at our community meeting coming up in October before we issue it. So I hope that answered your question, Councilwoman.
So there's sort of two all-call community meetings a year?
Correct. We used to have four. And then with our reduction in staff, we had to drop it down to two.
And then do you attend all the community association meetings every month?
Absolutely. The, the community meetings that we have are the community's association-
Community associations. You said there are five community associations.
No, ma'am, we do not. We used to have a staff person on board who did and we no longer have that person. So once we're able to generate additional revenue, it is our plan to, to fill that position. So we can do that more.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I have some more questions, but I'll yield. Thanks.
Colleagues, any other questions? Stokes?
I'm, I'm going to talk about parcel C. You said it's owned by the mayor, city council in Hopkins. When you start development, are you going to do a RFP on it or are you going to just sell it to Hopkins so they can develop it?
If EBDI develops it, we would do a RFP because that's our typical protocol. Depending on, right now, we can't do anything with the one-third of the mayor and city council lots because they're scattered around the site. They're not contiguous. So, you know, further discussions would have to be had, determine who can best develop that site.
So my question is, when they get ready, when you're ready to develop it, are you going to do a RFP? Because if Hopkins owned part of it, I've seen that change sometimes. You go ahead and sell it to Hopkins and then there's no RFP. I'm saying your commitment is to do a RFP on parcel C, period.
No, sir. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is right now EBDI cannot develop that parcel because we do not have site control over all of the lots on that parcel. If EBDI gains site control on all the lots on the parcel and we were to develop it, yes, we would issue an RFP. But I can't commit that we're going to issue an RFP because we don't have site control over those lots.
Well, once you have site control, you're going to do RFP and that's just going to be sold to Hopkins.
If, if we were to get site control of, over, over all the lots and we were to get it developed, yes, we would issue an RFP to find a developer.
And I will go back to my colleague. We reduced the board. You said you only have one community person on the board now?
Well, then we also have Senator McCray, who represents the 45th-
Community people. I'm an elected official.
Well, so he-
What community person? How many community people do you have on the board right now? I ain't talking about an elected official because we can talk about being Councilman Glover. How many community people are on the board right now?
As I mentioned earlier, we have one.
One person?
And we had two before.
One person. Y'all go to community meetings and present to the community what y'all doing and they got to listen to it. They have no say so. So you went from reducing the board, got most of the community people off the board and you got one person that don't vote, don't, you can sit there and scream and holler all you want. They do not vote.
He votes.
Well, they vote, okay. So you reduced the board. And who is the community person? Is they here?
They are. Johnny Coleman is here.
It's Johnny Coleman. Okay. So again, you reduce the community board. Why? The community is the community that went through that whole process, all that mess they went through. You moved out 500 people and y'all want to reduce the community board and the community don't have no say so. And Madam CEO, you do a great job, but you don't have a staff person to go to other meetings. So nobody go? To talk to the community? That's unbelievable.
Well, no, let me-
You gotta wait to hire somebody for somebody to go to the other five meetings?
Let me clarify. Councilwoman Ramos asked if we go to all of the community meetings. We don't go to all of them, but yes, I have been and other staff members have been to some of them. Let me put that on the record.
So how are you going to build a relationship with the community when you go to some of them? You got one person on the board. It's like unbelievable. What y'all did to people in that community and you reduce the community say so? You reduce community input on what they want to see there or presenting to them? You go to, you have your two meetings, but some people from EDBI go to some of the meetings. How you, how did that happen when you reduced the board with the community? You got Johnny Coleman over there. I remember Johnny raised all the hell about EDBI. About what they wasn't doing and now he on the board. How is that?
Well, in my opinion, it's good to have the persons who do push us to do more and to, you know, push us to make sure that we're doing better to be on the board. I advocated for Mr. Coleman to be on the board because I thought we needed more community representation and the board voted him in. And, and it's been a great, you know, opportunity to work with him in that capacity. And, but let me just stress that I hear what you're saying, Councilman Stokes. And I, it is my desire to make sure that the community's voice is, is heard, is part of all of our policies and programs. As I mentioned, my grandmother was one of the legacy residents. And so when I came to EBDI, I came with not only a personal interest, but also a professional interest, but really a commitment. That's why I've remained this long. I'm not saying that EBDI has been perfect by any stretch. We've accomplished a lot and there's still a lot more work to do. I think we're now poised to actually do some of the work that we've been promising to do for a long time. And I think that we just need to keep our hand on the plow and, and make sure that it happens.
So you removed two community people off the board, the one that Councilman Glover pointed and one our point. You reduced it, right?
No, I can't, so just to be clear, I am not, I'm an ex officio member. I don't control the board. So what the board decides and votes on to do is the board's decision. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I operate under the authority of the board. They direct me and my team to manage the operations of EBDI. So I know you have a lot of questions about the board, the board composition, the bylaws, but those conversations would need to be met with the board.
Even before you came in, Madam CEO, this was a mess from the beginning. Then you turn around and reduce the board and take community people off the board. They don't want to endure the mess and they still enduring it because you have not been transparent about everything you do. So my question was, who decided to reduce the board and remove community people off the board and leave one person? That don't make sense. That's not fair to people in the community.
What I will say is that as we move to set up things like the community reinvestment fund and other initiatives, it is a goal and that we will fulfill to make sure community residents are part of that structure, the board advising and, and having the decision-making authority of how it's stood up. I understand your point. It's, it's well taken.
How long y'all been talking about the reinvestment fund?
Since the beginning of EBDI.
My God. And we still talking about reinvestment fund? How much money have you gave to small business with that money? How much money is in account?
So I mentioned that in my presentation.
I know, but when, when are we going to find out? When are you going to have the reinvestment board together? We've been talking about this just at least five or more years and we still having the same conversation about it.
You were part of the, you were part of-
That's right. And I brought it up at the meeting also. So I'm saying, we still talking about we're going to do a reinvestment fund. We're going to put it together. It ain't together yet.
The good news, the good news is that for the first time in EBDI's history, by us being the master developer and having control over these future real estate projects, the board will be able to allocate a certain amount of those proceeds to go into the community reinvestment fund. Prior to us becoming master developer, other master developers had that authority and control over those parcels. So I hear what you're saying. It has taken a long time for us to get this done, but we're now poised, unlike ever before, to make sure that we bring that promise to fruition.
So when is that going to happen? Because you got a small business in this city that needs some funding sources. And I believe on that particular project, each building, whether it's built or not, there's a donation of $150,000 that goes into the reinvestment fund?
Well, that was for a city's commitment before they, you know, got bought out by Brookfield. And so they were able to during that time, give their first $150,000. But we, and when you ask the timing of it, we anticipate going to closing on 806 Collington in December. That will be the first real estate transaction that will be able to have the board allocate funds to the community reinvestment fund. We also anticipate going to closing on another parcel in March. That will bring in revenue that we can also allocate funds to go into the community reinvestment fund. And then as we dispose of and select developers for those six parcels, those transactions, when we go to closing, we'll also be able to bring in. So we have the opportunity, we as the community and the board and EBDI staff, to bring in millions of dollars if we chose to go into this community reinvestment fund.
So how much money in there now on the Brookfield?
So the two, so we have two funding sources. Brookfield did 150,000 and then the penalties that we imposed on a developer brought in 106,000.
So you got over $300,000.
$256,000.
And we still haven't put that together to make sure we invest in small business in the city?
We tried to and I will say we, we worked with fund managers and most of the fund managers in the city that we spoke to said, it doesn't make any sense to hire a fund manager and pay fees when you don't even have, when you have less than $500,000 in the fund. So we, we didn't, you know, so part of us managing the fund, what was called out in minority inclusion agreement, was hiring a fund manager. And fund managers just have not been interested with that small amount of money. We tried to support one of the businesses outside of our project area, as you know, with some startup funding, but the board at that time and the special committee that was formed to help, you know, the community reinvestment fund, which you were a part of, decided that we really needed to put more bones on the fund. What's the selection criteria? What type of, should it be a loan? Should it be a grant? And so that business unfortunately didn't get approved for a grant. But we have supported two other businesses in our project area during that timeframe. So there's a lot of opportunity ahead of us. If we allocate the funds from our real estate transactions into this fund, there will be opportunity for community residents, elected officials, to be a part of governing that body. And I'm optimistic that we will be able to set this up better than what was envisioned back in 2002.
Well, I'm glad you are, but the business that didn't get the money is because y'all didn't even have no structure in place. That young lady didn't even, went out of business because y'all didn't have any structure in place. And then they denied the business owner. That's unbelievable.
At the time, the board, the board decided that that company didn't provide the financial information that they needed to, to make that investment a prudent investment for EBDI. So they, so you were part of that committee, other residents were part of that committee and that decision was made at the board level.
I have two questions. When was East Inform giving grant money? What year was that? And what year was Frontline giving the $62,000?
Frontline in 2015 and then East In Garage, I want to say that was probably last year. So it's recent. And they also got, we also worked with them to get-
2015.
And we all, yeah. They spun out of EBDI.
One, let's, let's take a deep breath. Okay, let's, let's start with, we're going to bifurcate your questions. So what was the first organization, Councilman Stokes?
What year was East Inform giving some of the, I guess, the reinvestment money or that's?
Okay.
And what year was-
We're just going to do the first half of the question.
Sure. So EBDI supported East In Garage with the $7,500 as a match to some state grant, a great state grant application through Department of Housing and Community Development. So that happened and Mr. Baylor is here. I think that was last year? That was last year. And then the second question was about Frontline Management Services. And I do have Andre Bonaparte is here, who's the principal. That money was afforded when EBDI spun the whole public safety division out into its own company. And, you know, over time EBDI has been a partner, I would, and Andre can certainly testify, but I think we've been good working partners to make sure that that business started up and was, been able to continue to operate.
Before you get to your other question, what was the second organization?
Frontline.
Frontline Management Services.
Okay, go ahead.
So between Frontline in 2015 and East In Garage in 2024. Wow. This is nine-year difference. So you only gave out money to two minority groups in the last 10 years?
Yes, the board only approved those two.
Unbelievable. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, Schleifer, Glover, you're good? Schleifer?
Yes, if, if we can just backtrack to one thing, Tyler. What, one of my, my colleagues asked about, who'd you say was removed from the board? Colin? So I was just curious as far as a high, high level, if somebody, the city council confirms members to different boards and commissions that are quasi-city, right? So like if the mayor, council president, comptroller or the city council, we pick some people- some people also, uh, we, we pick who goes on different boards and commissions. That comes actually to my committee and then we have to, you know, have a hearing and determine whether or not they should pass or not. Those, those folks, unless I'm mistaken here, and I'm not familiar with this specific group, but I'm pretty sure all these positions are all volunteer-based. So they're not actually paid like some of the state commissions or things like that. So I, I'm, I'm curious if you can just explain, when you said it was a personnel matter, we discuss the entire thing in a public forum in council meetings, whether someone should be on a, on a board or commission, whether they shouldn't be. So if there's a reason why an individual or individuals were removed, um, then I, can you just explain why that's a personnel matter? Now, and, and just to preface it, I, I, I believe that smaller boards are better than bigger boards, you get more done. So this isn't about the specific board, just more of the personnel matter piece as to why a board or commission member is a personnel issue when this is the room that we handle those issues in.
Yeah, so that question was about a specific board member, right? And obviously, again, we don't speak to personnel matters in council chambers. Um, I would need to look at the law to see, I don't, I'm not aware off the top of my head if the members of EBDI, EBDI's board are pointed and confirmed by the council or not. Um, so I need to follow up on that.
But-
They're not, okay. Yeah, so they're not.
But where, where do you see that it's, um, a personnel matter? Like where does that come from?
In terms of?
Like where, I'm saying, I'm, I was looking through some of our rules, um, and like a personnel matter, I mean, just by definition, right? If you Google the word personnel, it's a, a person employed in an organization, right? So like, I understand there's rules that govern people who are employed. Board members are not employed by organizations.
Okay, so what's the specific question?
Why can't we get an answer to know why whoever this individual is, was removed from the board? My colleague asked, and he obviously is far more familiar with this than I am, uh, but people were removed from the board. He's asking about a specific person. You said it was a personnel matter. I gave you the definition of personnel, and so that doesn't line up. So I understand if I, if I were to ask you, you know, how come, uh, you know, how come, you know, Councilman Glover's staff member, uh, was, you know, was fired or moved to a different agency? I understand it's a personnel matter. If you ask me about one of my employees, that's a personnel matter, they're employed. These boards and commissions, people come on boards and off boards all the time. My committee handles that. And we discuss all of that in an open forum, cause it's not a personnel matter. Otherwise, the law department would not allow us to handle those things in this public forum. And so I'm just-
Okay, yeah, maybe, I'm sure. I mean, it wasn't an appropriate question for me to answer, I work for the mayor. Um, I think that Ms. Washington can add context there. I know that there was some restructuring that happened with the board, um, and so punt that over to EBDI.
Okay.
And I'm happy to, you hit the nail on the head, Councilman. Um, this smaller board is now more efficient in order to handle the, you know, the transactions and the master plan. And so it was more of an efficiency type of decision that was made. And the thought behind, um, Deputy Mayor Williams and also, um, Colin, is that they still work on behalf of the city and so we would, they're a partner of ours. So we would still be able to tap into any support that we would need from them.
Oh, so I, I didn't even know he was on the board. So Deputy, uh, Mayor Williams is, was removed from the board also?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we used to have around fifteen, up to eighteen at different times of board members.
Yeah, my question was not around specifically this, the, these moves, it was just more of, when do we have these quasi-entities? This body is entitled to know-
Right.
-why changes are made. And they're not sensitive and personal. And I don't think the deputy mayor or whoever else did anything wrong.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Forgive me for kind of misunderstanding at the top what the, you know, it was about a specific person. Um, and Councilman, I did get an answer to your question, um, Mr. Young reports to the chief of staff. You asked earlier who Calvin reported to.
Got it. That, that's helpful, thank you. I, I think I'm gonna attempt to summarize the concerns that Councilmen from the 12th and the 5th District raised regarding, um, the BDC president, which I think is kind of expanded in scope to include the deputy mayor for community and economic development. And you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think what I'm hearing is some concern over why two, uh, critical roles, right? Not the individuals, not Mr. Tarbert or Mr. Williams, but the role of the president and CEO of BDC and the role of the deputy mayor of community and economic development. Because, uh, the city is so closely tied to EBDI, um, through funding and land disposition agreements and so on and so forth, that it seems, um, curious as to why those two specific roles were removed from the board and how that makes the board, um, more efficient when the, the mayor has four appointments to the board and the people that are appointed to the board until, uh, I believe recently with, with Mr. Young, he recently joined the city, like, we'll just call it recently. Why the board, so, so this is directed at the board, why the board made the decision to remove those critical roles in the economic development conversation from having a voice on the board on behalf of the, the mayor and the administration? Councilman Stokes and Councilman Schleifer, did I articulate that correctly?
Well, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, my, my matter was not about the specific logistics that, it was just a high level, these organizations in general. But I do have a, another follow-up question on that that came to my mind, so is now the right time?
Um, what, Councilman Stokes, did I capture that accurately? Okay, yep, Schleifer.
So in, in part of explaining that, um, and I looked it up and you're correct, your, your board members don't need to be confirmed by the city council, um, whereas in some other, um, scenarios and other groups that are similar in nature, they do. Um, and so i- is there, do you know, like, if there's a reason for that? Or you guys have any, would you have any opposition to, to the city council requiring that board members for your, your entity be confirmed by the city council?
So, um, I can't speak to why it was like that. Our bylaws have been the same since EBDI's inception, and I don't think it would be for me to speak to, um, you know, how the board members are appointed and approved. I know that historically, the board itself has approved the appointments and other at-large members, just like any other nonprofit does.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think it comes down to like city charter. So some of these entities are required in the city charter and others aren't, but any group like this, uh, could be required in the city charter. So I just wasn't sure if that was something that you would be open to or not if we were to take a, do a review of, of these entities or not.
Um, I, I would, um, I'd have to give it some thought, but as long as it's gonna allow us to be efficient and complete our master plan and not hold up progress, then, you know, I think that that would be for the board to decide and for the administration and the council to decide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, excellent. Seeing that there are none, um, we will now move to public testimony. Uh, Mr. Berry, Mr. Struik and Mr. Wilson, I believe those were the three individuals that signed up for the previous bill or any of those individuals here? Mr. Berry, Mr. Struik, or Mr. Wilson? You are, what's that? Are you Mr. Struik or Mr. Wilson? Excuse me? I can't hear you. Come on. Oh, no, no, you're, I'll, I'll come to you in a minute, sir. Yep, thank you. Okay. So I was reading from the wrong sheet. Okay, all right. Just bear with me. Okay, we have, uh, Antonia Daniels, who I think signed in but did not plan to testify, is that correct? Okay, excellent. Uh, Bishop Chapman. Funny how things work out like that. The, the Lord works in mysterious ways. Hit that, uh, the bottom right. Yep. Yep, good to go, sir.
All righty. I think it's, uh, I think it's almost afternoon or afternoon by now. I was just teasing, um, Councilwoman, uh, Ramos about, we've been in here a long time. Maybe y'all should have had a little deli out there. I'm sure all y'all hungry by now. But, um, my name is Bishop Barry Chapman. I am a, uh, long, I was a long time resident for Baltimore City. Uh, I grew up in eleven hundred block of Rutland Avenue, okay, which is, I think about maybe three hundred feet from where EBDI is now located. I, uh, came here to testify today on, on EBDI's, uh, superb, uh, initiatives on, on dealing with, uh, small businesses. Uh, when EBDI, uh, was involved in three projects over in East Baltimore. One of them was the, um, the Marriott Residence Inn at Wolf and Eager, and the other one was the Maryland State Laboratory Administration, and the other one was Eager Park. Uh, they, they sought out, uh, a lot of different businesses on those different projects. One of those businesses was mine, which was Bishop Barry Pest Control. So we did the, um, they worked with us, with, uh, meeting with the, uh, the contractors. I think the contractor for, for, um, the Marriott Residence Inn was, um, Hensel Phelps. I don't remember who the other contractors were on the other two projects. But I, I was involved in all three of those projects, uh, with the help of EBDI. So in my humble opinion, EBDI has done a very good job, um, making sure that when the contracts come through East Baltimore, that East Baltimore companies, uh, and minority businesses are included. Those, those three projects set me on a road to become a very successful pest control company here in Baltimore City. Our first, um, location in Baltimore City was, we had an office at twenty-two twenty-two Jefferson Street, which is, we had a suite on the third floor of the Men and Family Center. And now we recently moved over here, um, right around the corner from City Hall, which is two eighteen East Lexington Street. But, um, here to say that because of EBDI's, um, initiative to deal with community-oriented businesses, it set us on a path to set up a twenty-state strategy of how to do pest control, not just in Baltimore City and the surrounding counties, but to, but to move out of the comfort zone and move into different states. So now we're in PA, DC, Virginia and Delaware. So I said, I'm, I'm in support of, um, you know, making sure that the council constantly works with EBDI and make sure that they had the funding to operate. And I've also have a written testimony I'd like to leave for the record, uh, after I speak here today. And I entertain any questions that you may have, um, based on what I've said.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
Yes, my question is, we have Frontline here, we have East In Garage, we have you. Okay. Right? It's three businesses, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the way with the other businesses.
Okay, minority business, whatever you wanna call it. You got three minority businesses. EBDI been existing for over twenty years, and you only can get three people to come here and testify about the minority contracts that they give out? Not you. What I'm saying, where the rest of the businesses? If you have given out a lot of business contracts to minorities in African-Americans in this city, we can only get the three recent ones or ones we have a great relationship with to come and testify and say, hey, look what we doing. Twenty years, you only get three, three businesses to come in and testify? If that was, those businesses were proud of getting their contracts with EDBI, where are they at? That's, that's, I, the, the percentage is great. I'm gonna physically see, like I asked for the contract, you say you gave them to, but where are the rest of the contractors that got contracts from EDBI over the last twenty years? You got three people here.
I could have certainly gotten a lot more, but I thought we had time constraints. But we can certainly set up another time, and I'm happy to bring in a whole bunch. But the information that I did email to you, you're gonna see that there's hundreds of African-American, but more than that, minority businesses and local businesses in the list that I provided to you.
But we, we never gave you no time constraints either.
When I spoke to the chair, I thought I only had twenty minutes, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, who, who I give the written testimony to?
This lady right here. And we have a Brian Knight. You wish to testify? Okay. Very good. Uh, Andy Freeman?
Good morning. Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, you're right. It's been a while. Um, I have a, a written statement that I wanna read and then I'll, I wanna counter some of the things that were said during the test, during the presentation today as
Are you just Andy Freeman or Andy Freeman on behalf of any group?
I'm Andy Freeman on behalf of Andy Freeman. Good morning, my name is Andy Freeman. And I was the VP of Real Estate Development at EBDI prior to being let go on June eighth of this year as a result of blatant racial discrimination and a violation of my First Amendment constitutional rights by none other than EBDI's board chair Calvin Young and Baltimore City's mayor Brandon Scott. I think a forensic audit is long overdue, as during my tenure at EBDI, I saw many inconsistencies, lack of professional and industry experience at the staff, board and committee levels, and several conflicts of interests with stakeholders, developers, politicians and board members. I've observed a state senator, who happens to sit on the board, by the way, award monies to a for-profit developer through an appropriations bill to the tune of one point three four million and funnel it through a nonprofit organization that wasn't even within the EBDI footprint or affiliated with EBDI and allow it to be used for the acquisition and development of a market rate multifamily project in the EBDI foot, footprint while falsely representing that it was an affordable community. I was also made aware that one million dollars was spent to relocate just one person, Valerie Maynard, who has since passed, and EBDI was also remiss at collecting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was still owed to EBDI by this person, who by the way, was a world-renowned artist. As I understand, the board chair Calvin Young also had his friend put under contract for twenty thousand dollars after I was let go to manage a vacant building, which you've heard was eight oh six Collington, uh, to manage, which is a vacant building owned by EBDI that was under contract, and as you heard today as well, is under contract to be sold. It required no active management whatsoever. These few examples exemplify the necessity of a forensic audit and should be done by the very best forensic accounting firm available regardless of minority status. During my time at EBDI, an impact audit was done orchestrated in large part by Johns Hopkins in what appeared to be an attempt at sidestepping the previous calls for a forensic audit. After being wrongfully terminated myself and after Karen Johnson, the previous chief real estate officer was also terminated, and after Abe Rosenthal, the real estate committee chair and board member resigned because of what Calvin Young had done, there is no one left with any real estate or development experience with knowledge of EBDI transactions that could even participate in any kind of audit. It is hard to imagine that there is anyone left at EBDI that is even capable of executing on EBDI's mission and core values, given the lack of expertise, experience and knowledge that I have observed. I implore upon the city council to use its authority to investigate EBDI to the fullest extent, as I believe EBDI has clearly lost its way.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I can address just a few things, um, that were talked about before that I just wanna clarify, um, so when, when there's a discussion of economic inclusion, yes, there is an economic inclusion, uh, policy, which is pretty robust. However, there is one particular, um, developer, um, that happened to be a minority developer who is the only developer within the EBDI- who is the only developer within the EBDI footprint that did not comply with economic inclusion, interestingly enough. There had to be a settlement agreement with this person because they refused to provide all of the input and the necessary information to show that they did comply with economic inclusion. And so they ended up coming up with a settlement agreement and he had to sign an affidavit indicating that he did, even though he gave absolutely no proof that he did. As far as the information before, I know there was an issue with person. I don't work for the city and I don't work for EBDI, so I can speak to that a little bit. So Calvin Young did a lot of things singularly, where he was supposed to do it as a board. He just decided that he had the authority and the power to do whatever he wanted. He fired those board members. He fired Justin Williams. He fired Colin Tarbert. He also fired the community person. And he did that without a vote of the board. He did it on his own. And I know that only because Abe Rosenthal, who was the chair of the Real Estate Committee, who was also a board member and also on the executive committee, indicated that these people were shocked when they were told in that particular meeting. They had no idea that this was even coming at them. And part of the reason that he did that, Calvin, was because he felt that the board was unwieldy and he obviously needed people that were going to agree with him. And so he got rid of the people that he didn't want there. There was talk before about EBDI looking for a grocery store for the past 10 to 12 years. So I did a lot of research on food deserts and grocery stores. I've developed grocery stores before as well. By the way, I came to EBDI with almost 40 years of real estate experience. So quite adept at all of these issues. What was really interesting is that, including the Lidl that I believe Dan Henson is about to develop, there are five grocery stores within a mile and a half of the EBDI footprint. It is no longer, and has, quite frankly, not actually been defined as a food desert for years. So everybody talking about grocery store, grocery store, grocery store, grocery store, it's not a food desert. It's just not a food desert. As far as the Phase 2B infrastructure, I just want to point out that I actually got that plan finally through the city, along with our civil engineers, who were terrible, by the way. And by the way, it took me four months to actually get the MyLars signed. Or I shouldn't say signed, they were signed. It turned out that DPW said that, it turned out that they were actually sitting signed in one of the employees' offices for like four months. And every time I asked about it, they didn't know the answer. But that's been approved. I was going to actually, as an employee of EBDI, I was actually going to manage that project, saving EBDI half a million dollars, which they now had to go out and solicit a company to go and do that through an RFP that they issued a few months ago. I would tell you, I don't know. So with Parcel U, which was the wet lab that I think was talked about earlier before, I actually negotiated and had that under a purchase and sale agreement with MCB. And that was going along, and it looked like it was going to be great. The reason, truthfully, that that fell apart was because Johns Hopkins didn't step up to the plate when they were asked to. Johns Hopkins was actually the people who requested that that parcel be put up for Wet Lab. That was their request. And then when push came to shove, at the end of the day, when all of these tenants that they were putting together to fill up that building, they wanted to be sure that they obviously had the relationship with Johns Hopkins because why else would you want to be there, right? But Johns Hopkins pulled back from that, and so therefore that fell apart. So there was a question by the councilperson before. Forgive me for not knowing your name. It's been a while since I've been here in council chambers. You had asked a question about why 806 is being sold at an amount less than it was previously. So the reason for that actually is that prior to my coming on board with EBDI, it was actually up for sale. It was up for sale, and it was going to be sold somewhere in the $4 million range. But that was actually pulled off the sale by Senator Corey McCray, who delayed the sale of that property, where we could have actually gotten $3.94 million. But unfortunately, that number is, it's less than half of that now, just because of that delay. As far as Parcel C was concerned, I know there was some discussion about that as well, and said that there was no plans. I happen to know firsthand, only because I negotiated the deal. Unless it's blown up, there is a purchase and sale agreement for Parcel C with Johns Hopkins. I negotiated the deal. And it is being sold to Johns Hopkins. Again, unless that deal has blown up. But there are plans, that's the plan. So anyway, so that's the situation with that. I will just say that what you heard today about EBDI is a lot of smoke and mirrors. I think that there needs to be a deep investigation of EBDI because a lot of what you heard, I can promise you, is just there to appease you and not to give you the truth. Because as far as I'm concerned, transparency is not a core value of EBDI. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Stokes?
Yes. You mentioned about not ask the CEO about Parcel C? And you saying there is an interest on it and it's Hopkins?
There's not an interest. There's actually a signed purchase and sale agreement. Okay, well, it's not signed, but it was negotiated before. There's a signed letter of intent.
So it's not signed, but there's an interest?
Oh, not just interest, I mean.
So, Madam CEO, I ask you the question. Was anybody interested in that Parcel C?
No, sir, that's not the question. You said if we had any development plans for the parcel. Did EBDI have any development plans? EBDI does not have any.
But I also mentioned Hopkins, too.
And I said they own 2/3 of the lots?
But I said, are you going to do a RFP? Is Hopkins interested in the property? And you said, no, we're not going to do a RFP, so.
No, sir, that's not what I said.
What did you say then?
You didn't ask me if Hopkins was interested. You asked me, is EBDI going to issue an RFP for the development of the site? And I said, if EBDI retains or gets site control over those 2/3 lots that Hopkins has, then we would issue an RFP to get that parcel developed. But right now, there are no development plans. That's what I stated.
But this gentleman said there is some interest already there for Hopkins.
There have been discussions over a long period of time since Hopkins owns 2/3 of those lots. They're in ownership of them. EBDI or Mayor City Council owns 1/3 of those lots. As I mentioned to you, neither Hopkins nor EBDI can develop that parcel unless some agreement comes to bear because the lots that both parties own are not contiguous. They're scattered around the parcel. So as of right now, no development can happen until some arrangement is made on who is going to get site control over those lots.
So if that, let's say this city gets control of the rest of the lots. It's definitely going to be a RFP. And there's some interest with Hopkins, but it hasn't been signed yet. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Start, Mr. Rutter. If you're going to take pictures for your blog, I need you to move to the area where that gentleman is, back there. We're not going to have any distractions in here. Councilman, please continue.
Also mentioned about reducing the board with the community. And you say it went to the board. This gentleman said it didn't go to the board. It was Mr. Young that made the decision, so I just want to clarify that.
I'm glad you did. Thanks for that. It did go to the board. It went to the board in the June board meeting. And by that time, Mr. Rosenthal, who was a board member who resigned, was not in the meeting because he had resigned prior to the June board meeting. And the board did vote on that information and on the changes to the bylaws and to the board composition.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Freeman?
If I can just clarify one thing.
I'm not going to. You can clarify something you said, but I am not going to permit you to engage with or respond to anything that Ms. Washington just said. But if you want to clarify something that you previously said, you are welcome to. As a matter of practice, I don't permit witnesses to question agency officials or those that are in kind of a quasi-status. Mic on. Yeah, so what I'm going to have you do is swap that mic with the mic right behind Mr. Schneller. Yep, and then move that other one over there. And then let's give that one a try. But, Ms. Freeman, I want to be very clear in my instruction that I will not permit engagement back and forth. So this is going to be clarification on something you previously said. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that there was a negotiated and executed letter of intent with Johns Hopkins for the purchase of Parcel C. And there was also a negotiated purchase and sale agreement. There was no RFP. It was just a direct negotiation with Johns Hopkins.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for Mr. Freeman? Okay, seeing that there are none, thank you. We have a, where did Brian Knight? We have a Graylin Smith? Are you testifying, yes or no? Thank you. Mr. Adrian Bonaparte, good to have you. What's that? Andre, or Andre, geez. Once I saw the face, after I misread your name, because I'm terrible at reading other people's handwriting, I wanted to welcome you back to City Hall and thank you for your service to our city, Mr. Bonaparte. Mic on. Bottom right button, red ring, and you're good to go.
Things have changed since I was last here, but thank you.
Yes, we had wired microphones, which were a tripping hazard. Please continue.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers. I have some just-prepared statement that I'd like to give this afternoon. Again, my name is Andre Bonaparte. I'm the president of Frontline Management Services. We are a small minority business located in the heart of the EBDI project area and are a certified MBE with the city of Baltimore. Our company provides the clean and safe services for what is now known as Eager Park and have been in this role, have been the provider of these services since 2015. I'm here this morning to support EBDI and its efforts, specifically as it relates to their minority inclusion efforts for minority business enterprises. And root here today, I'm reminded of something President Huo-Ho Kamala Harris has been speaking of while on the stoop when she speaks of helping small businesses and the challenges they face. Things like financial resources, business development, and startup resources are instrumental in a new business's success. And I can tell you that our company would not be in existence today without the support and assistance of Ms. Washington, both in her current role as president of EBDI and her previous role as a minority inclusion officer for EBDI. Ms. Washington has and remains a staunch supporter of our efforts towards providing a clean and safe environment for the citizens of Baltimore. She was instrumental in aiding us towards other opportunities when those occasions arose. And to that, we are thankful. As a longtime family member of a historic family of East Baltimore, the Mello family, I, we have seen the development, growth, and opportunity of this initiative to the greater East Baltimore. It is our hope that this project will finish on its promise to provide a thriving community for all who live, work, and play in the Eager Park community. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the council.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bonaparte? Seeing there are none. We had a Karen Smith. Oh, got it. And we also had a Graylin Smith. Oh, that's, apologies. Thank you. Okay, Ben Baylor. With Eastern Garage, I believe. Yes, sir. Come on up. Make sure you hit that button on the bottom right. Once you got a red ring, you're good to go.
We're good? Can you hear me?
Red ring, you're good. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Washington for the job that, oh, she helped me and my brother with. We've been in business since 1945. Been in that area all my life. And prior to that, when they helped us just eat a small facade, which made us look better in the community in our surroundings. And she helped us do that. And I'd like to thank her for it and EBDI for helping me and my brother in that situation. Like I said, we've been there a long time, and we've never had any help from anybody.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Baylor? Excellent. Mr. Coleman. Mr. Johnny Coleman.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Council.
And Mr. Coleman, you just make sure you're about six inches away from that mic so we can hear you, please, and thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Councilmembers. My name is Johnny Coleman. I live in the Eager Park community. I saw my community go from fully occupied to mostly vacant houses before EBDI came into existence. Now my community is full of newly rehabilitated and newly constructed homes. We have trees, green spaces, and local businesses. I am proud to live in Eager Park neighborhood community. EBDI has been a benefit to me and my family, also to other families. Before EBDI, before EBDI, my community was under attack by drugs, crime, vacant houses, and disinvestment. Before the redevelopment process started, I decided to reinvest my community funds that I was received through relocation to reinvest in a house on a historic block. I believe EBDI will finish what they started with their partners. I watched this process for 20 years. And in closing, I stand with EBDI. I am a longtime Baltimore resident, and I still believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Coleman? Seeing that there are none, are there any other members of the public who are present today who wish to testify? Oh, come on up. Oh, Mr. Scott. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well, Councilman.
Red ring on and first and last name and any affiliations, please. Is your red ring on up here?
It is. Can you hear me now? Good afternoon. My name is Todd Scott. I live in the community, East Baltimore Development, and I have a couple of comments I want to mention. That was concerning to me. I was a board member from the community with EBDI. In 2018, I was extremely concerned and brought some alarming, what I thought was data and statistics that were not correct to their attention. At that time, I was a former Department of Housing for the state of Maryland employee, and I had time to look at numbers and read data. I questioned consistently, pretty much on a weekly basis, the data that I was looking at. I stated to them that the numbers were not adding up. I constantly said the MBE numbers weren't accurate. The economic inclusion numbers were not accurate. It was so tiresome. Week after week, month after month, in my opinion, the board meetings were not productive because we kept kicking things down the road, down the road, down the road. We never got to the point where I was not just satisfied the numbers did not make sense on the economic inclusion as well as the community reinvestment. So I just got concerned. I'm not concerned at the fact that I'm not on the board anymore. It was just the fact that as a resident, I'm born and raised in East Baltimore. I had concerns about the numbers as far as when properties were sold. It became, and I grew up in the projects, there's nothing against that. But what I was looking at was homes being sold for $300,000, $400,000. But basically, there were investors buying the properties, and those investors were renting the properties out. So what it looked like is that you're building, basically, So what, what it looked like is that you're building basically a nice-looking area, but basically, it's like projects, that you are not building homeownership. It looked like it, but that wasn't the result. And I was adamant about that. Where is the information? Where is the reporting? Where is the data to make and hold these developers accountable so that before they start marketing the properties, there has to be a certain percentage of properties that are actually going to be held for a period of time and not just held, they're sold to homeowners? I kept, I, myself and some others were acting like property managers because everything was being rented. So that was a problem. And one thing I will say, I do disagree with one thing you said, not everything you said. And, and one thing I say, there's a food desert there. People have to, they might not have access to transportation, they have to get on a bus or get down to the Canton area. In Canton, they have Whole Foods, Target, Sprouts, Harris Teeter, and Target. And we complained, I kept hearing the complaint about there's not enough density. There's more than enough density to have a grocery store there. And I was very concerned about that. But I will add this. We don't have grocery stores there, but there sure has been four or five more corner stores there. So I guess if you add those corner stores up, you got your grocery store. It's pathetic. It's embarrassing. I'm so hurt and so concerned about what is taking place in that footprint. I do want to say one good thing. He does great work, so I will, I will admire that. I'm not just here beating, beating anybody up. I'm stating facts. I appreciate the work of Frontline. They do a great job. I've always said that. But when you're looking at grants that have been administered from the Community Reinvestment Act, you're averaging, what, one grant every 10 years? This is, it's completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions, colleagues, for Mr. Scott? Are there any other members of the public who wish, are there any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Going once? Twice? Any other members of the public who wish to testify? Okay. I will now turn it over to Councilman Stokes for closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, auditors. Thank you, EBDI, and some of the business owners who come before the council, because it's been a long time since I think you ever been here. So this chamber's looking new to a whole lot of people in here. But, Mr. Chair, I have a request. I would like for this to not be voted out and reconvened with the chair of the EBDI Board. Can we do that?
Mic, mic. Oh, were you gonna say something? Sorry. Oh, sorry. You just came up to the mic like you were getting ready to. So you would like to reconvene the hearing with the chair of the EBDI Board present?
I think that's something we like to discuss before a decision is made on that.
So here's what I think we should do. Mr. Schnella, if, if, I'm gonna ask that you get with the Department of Law today specifically related to the, the resolution. So I'm inclined to accommodate my colleague's request. I want to make sure that we are doing that in a legally sufficient manner. So I'm gonna ask that you get a response by call of business tomorrow from, from the law department. We're not gonna vote this, this resolution out today. I'll, I'll ask that you get a determination from the law department as to... Let me go back a second. I'll tell you what we're gonna do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna chew on this for a minute. We're gonna put this into recess. We're gonna vote out our rezoning bill, and then I'll bring this back to order in about five minutes. So we are, we are now in recess. We will come back to this hearing in a, in a few minutes. We're now gonna reconvene Council Bill 24-0222, zoning, commercial one, Village Center District, conditional use retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales, variance of 6242 Bologna Avenue. Colleagues, as we discussed earlier, Councilman Burnett and Councilman Schleifer, we held, we initiated a hearing on this matter earlier. There was a presentation from the applicant. Councilman Conway, the sponsor of this bill, spoke favorably on the matter. We had two members of the committee who came to testify in support of Councilman Conway's proposal, and we were informed of a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the applicant and the community. There were no proposed amendments to the bill. At this time, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Schleifer is second by Stokes. Costello is a yes. Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
McCray and Dorsey are absence, absent, and Middleton has an excused absence today. This bill passes with four yays and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the city council. Let's reconvene resolution, so we're now in recess on that matter. Let's reconvene Resolution 24-0226R, informational hearing, East Baltimore Development Incorporated So I understand the request from Councilman Stokes to have the chair of the EBDI Board present to reconvene on this matter. That being said, this is a complex request because the chair of the board, while being a appointee of the mayor, is also an employee of the city, which kind of raises the, the question as to in what capacity he would be back here. And.
And it would certainly, Mr. Chair, be my thought that he'd be in his capacity as the chair of EBDI.
Okay. That being said, you've, you've answered what I believe was a complex question in that whether he was here in his capacity as chair of the board, as a mayoral appointee, or in his capacity as a city employee, because you've indicated that he would be here in his capacity as an appointee who is chair of the board. I would venture to believe that he would not be receiving direction from the mayor or his supervisor, the chief of staff, as to whether or not he is permitted to be at the hearing. So because of that, I am inclined to accommodate the, the councilman's request. So what, what I'm gonna ask is that committee staff send a written communication to Mr. Young, the, the chair of the board. I'm gonna ask that you copy myself, Councilman Stokes, Mr. Schnella, and the chief of staff as, as his supervisor, as a city employee, and that you request his availability to appear before the committee and request a response in writing prior to call of business on Friday, October 4th. Does that seem like a reasonable timeframe?
Sure.
And we're gonna request his availability for a Tuesday in the, you know, 10 to, 10 to 12 plus or minus timeframe during the month of, the remainder of the month of October. Does everyone seem like a reasonable course of action to get started? Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chair, any specific topics that maybe he should come prepared to discuss?
Uh, yeah.
I presented a fairly robust presentation today, so just wondering what would be left?
Absolutely. So I'm gonna ask that that written communication go out by call of business today. Councilman Stokes, I'm gonna ask that you get with Ms. Garrett, staff to the committee, immediately after this, this hearing is concluded, to share the topics of, of questions that you have for Mr. Young, the chair of the board. Mr. Schnella, does that address your previous comment?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett, you're good on, on the instruction?
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Schnella or Councilman Stokes, do you have anything to add to the proposed course of action that I've laid out? Okay. Seeing that there's no other business before this committee, we are now in recess. Thank you.